And the first item on the agenda this evening would be to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask Mr. Davidson to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I have had a request by Councilmember Zapata to pull item number three, the approval of a sidewalk cafe license for 982 Canton Street, BIUQ, off the consent. So we'll hear that after the consent agenda. Do I have approval for the consent agenda? Approval by Councilmember Tizer, second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next item we'll hear is the approval of the sidewalk cafe license for 982 Canton Street, BIUQ. Community Development, could you present this place?
Yes, okay, scroll over again. So just a second here, we're getting there. Can you see our screen?
Yes. Well, no, we can see you, not the screen.
Okay, hold on a second, we'll be sharing our screen in a second here. That's the approval, go up a little. Keep going, keep going. One more, there you go. Okay, so we're gonna share the screen here in a second. Alright, so this is a sidewalk cafe license request for 982 Canton Street, the BIUQ, sorry, BIUQ LLC. Okay. So this was the GC BBQ prior to the BIUQ. Had also received a sidewalk cafe license. And prior to GC BBQ was another restaurant. So BIUQ is asking to use the same configuration that was previously had been approved by the tenant prior to them. This is the proposed drawing. The property line is red. The sidewalk cafe license portion is the portion closest to Canton Street. The portion closest to the building is not, is on private property, so it's not the sidewalk cafe section. So as you can see on the plan, there's one, two, three, four, about six tables that they have out there that are currently existing since they were there from the previously, previous tenants that were approved originally. So they would like to use the same configuration that's existing. And then we have some, we have a couple of, here's another drawing to kind of show you what the applicant put in. And then staff recommends approval with a couple of conditions. To be in accordance with the plan stamped received September 25th. And that the five-foot clearance required for the ADA is maintained. Do you have any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I just, I want to, I want to give a comment that, that obviously, as we've had these different discussions in the past, I certainly believe there's, there's certain areas, especially in a walkable downtown, that should be greater than five feet available. That being said, given where this one is specifically located, it seems to be kind of where, where I kind of see it just getting more narrower versus, versus the southern part, versus on a commercial corridor, et cetera. So ultimately, although I see each one absolutely differently, this is one where, where I am supportive of it as, as shown. And I, and I see that it is ensuring there's that five-foot minimum. And so I will be voting in support of this tonight.
Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that the five-feet minimum will be respected all across the property and the sidewalk. I saw, you know, some places might be four feet near to the light post. So I just want to make sure that the five feet will be all across the sidewalk cafe.
Yes, that's why we have that condition in there, but, and it does meet that requirement. So that, and that condition indicates that it must be maintained.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Tizer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a comdev item.
Councilmember Palermo, you have not been recognized. Councilmember Tizer.
Yes. If, if the mayor believes it's a comdev item, I defer to Councilmember Zapata. It was on the consent agenda, which is why I motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Tizer. Councilmember Zapata?
Okay, yes, I see Department, Community Development, so I would like to make a motion, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Zapata, second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the reading of a proclamation for Administration and Finance Appreciation Week. And whereas the week of October 19th through October 23rd, 2020 will be recognized as Administration and Finance Appreciation Week. And whereas, the mission statement for the Administration Department is providing result-oriented communication, service, and innovation to our customers. The Administration Department currently operates with 78 employees. And whereas, the mission statement for the Finance Department is to provide premier financial stewardship by effectively managing the fiscal activities of the city. The Finance Department currently operates with 30 employees. Now therefore, I, Lori Henry, Mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby proclaim the week of October 19th through the 23rd as Administration and Finance Appreciation Week in the City of Roswell. I would also like to call upon all of our citizens to recognize the talents and dedication of our employees and these two departments who strive for excellence and provide the best customer service to our citizens. So I look forward to Admin Finance Week, and I would like to give Admin Finance a round of applause. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of the City of Roswell receiving awards for the FY 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the FY 2019 Popular Annual Financial Report from the Government Finance Officers Association. Mr. Lockett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to recognize the dedicated team we have within the Finance Department and their commitment to achieving excellence on behalf of the city. There are two different national awards that the city has received. Each one recognizing the city's efforts in providing useful, timely, accurate, and transparent financial reporting. The first award is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and is awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. This award was established in 1945 to recognize governments that prepare comprehensive annual financial reports, we call them CAFERS, that demonstrate a spirit of transparency and full disclosure and that go beyond the minimum requirements. The city's CAFER for FY 2019 was reviewed by a committee of finance professionals with expertise in public sector financial reporting. This is the 34th consecutive year that the City of Roswell has received this award. The second award is the Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting, also called the PAFER for FY 2019 from the Government Finance Officers Association. While the CAFER is over 100 pages long, the PAFER is a 10-page document that is meant to take very technical information and summarize it into something that is more visually appealing and relatable to the average person. This is the second year that the city has produced a PAFER and the second year that the city has received this award. I'd like to recognize our Accounting Division staff and our Accounting Manager Jennifer Stewart for their efforts in achieving this recognition. I'd also like to recognize our Community Relations Division, especially Karen Ziddermer and Joel Vasquez. They did a great job of taking our most interesting financial details and producing something that could appeal to our residents more easily. Community Relations has also assisted us in getting this information posted on the city's website as well as promoting it through other means. And then finally, I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you to you all, Mayor and Council, and our city administrator for your support and commitment to adhering to best practices when it comes to local government finance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett. And I would also like to thank you because this has been a huge, huge hit with the citizens. They really do enjoy it, and you have put it in terms where it's easily understood, and you've answered all of their questions. So thank you so much for your interaction with our citizens. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Now, I would like to read a proclamation recognizing Betty Prescott. And I have to just call you Mrs. Prescott because that's how I knew you with my daughter. I had the conversation earlier today with Councilmember Judy, and he also knew you as Ms. Prescott. And so you are near and dear to our hearts as Ms. Prescott. So I'm uncomfortable calling you Betty, but I'll give it a shot. So whereas Betty Prescott has lived in Roswell for over 54 years and her children grew up in our recreation programs. And whereas Betty Prescott was a physical education teacher and worked collaboratively with the Department of Recreation and Parks, Historic and Cultural Affairs to secure a joint use agreement with Roswell North Elementary. And whereas Betty Prescott has volunteered with the Youth Baseball Program, the Roswell Historical Society, and the Drape House for homeless mothers with minor children. And whereas Betty Prescott has served on the Board of North Fulton Retired Teachers Association as a deacon in her church and additionally sings in the choir, teaches Sunday School, and volunteers on mission projects. And whereas, upon retirement, Betty Prescott joined the Adult Recreation Center Social Club for Seniors called the Roswell Ramblers Club and have served on the board in many different capacities, from secretary to now president of the club. And whereas, during Betty Prescott's many years of service, she has helped raise funds for the Roswell Adult Aquatic Center as well as the Adult Recreation Center. And whereas, as a, as the Ramblers President, Betty Prescott actively engages the membership to ensure a variety of activities in order to meet the needs of the diverse club with membership of over 700. And whereas, on October 7th, 2020, Betty Prescott was awarded the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Award for District 7 Volunteer of the Year. Now therefore, I, Lori Henry, do hereby acknowledge Betty Prescott for her dedicated service to the City of Roswell and call upon all of our citizens and the city employees to congratulate Betty Prescott for her GRPA District 7 Volunteer of the Year Award. Bless all, honor Ms. Prescott. And I believe we've got Mary Rummel here to introduce Ms. Prescott. So Ms. Rummel, would you do the honors?
Sure, hello, thank you. This is the award, and here you go, Betty.
Awesome.
And she had a few things she'd like to say.
Terrific. Do we have the microphone? Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Prescott, we can't hear you. So one second, we'll try to work out the audio.
Yeah, Mary, just pull the computer closer to Ms. Prescott.
Okay.
I just want to thank the City of Roswell. I love this city, and I love Recreation and Parks Department. Everything, everybody, from Mr. Leatherman all the way down to the crews that work in the fields. And so many of them I taught, and so proud of them. I want to thank Mary Rummel and Mary Greenfield and everybody else that's worked through this pandemic to make sure our citizens are well taken care of. I just had a little bump in the road, and I plan to be back as soon as I can. Thank you for this honor, and I love everybody in the city and Rec Department, thank you.
Ms. Prescott, we love you too, so let's have another round of applause.
Thank you, Matt. You know, I told Matt.
You were awesome.
I told the area department, so I have a.
Thank you so much. I wish we could be there to have a picture with you.
I know, but I understand.
Yeah, this COVID thing, you know, is kind of cramping our style. But hopefully, we'll have a picture soon. So as through, as soon as we're through the narrows here, we'll get a picture.
Alright.
Thank you so much, Ms. Betty Prescott.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Community Development Department, and I will hand this over to Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three of the regular agenda, public hearing for the proposed urban redevelopment plan and submission of the opportunity zone application.
Good evening, City Council. This is a public hearing for consideration of the urban redevelopment plan and the submission of the City of Roswell's application for a new opportunity zone. As you know, the opportunity zone was originally approved in 2010. It's good for 10 years, there's no extension, so the city has to reapply for a new zone. One of the requirements of that application is urban redevelopment plan. We believe we have here before you a plan that meets the requirements of the state and that would put the city in a great position to, for an approval of a new opportunity zone. Tonight, I have here the consultants are from RKG, Kyle Talenti and Warren Campbell to answer questions along with Kimberly Altred and Steve Strout from Roswell Inc. Are there any questions?
Does council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So thanks, Ms. Wakefield, appreciate the discussion as well as, as well as Roswell Inc. and Kyle, et cetera. So I guess a question I have is, as I looked at the map, definitely seemed like there were so many parcels on the west side, and it seemed a lot fewer on the, on the east side. And I obviously know one, one big aspect is these parcels cannot be residential. So obviously, you know, when we have large, whether it be large neighborhoods, large apartment complexes, townhouse complexes, et cetera, those are areas, it's my understanding, are not eligible. That being said, I guess my question is, are there any commercial properties on Holcomb Bridge Road that are not included in this? That's, I just want to, that's something I'm kind of curious about. Because as I, as I looked at the map, I certainly saw the, the area, you know, with the old, the old CompUSA. I saw the old Kohl's, I saw a number of different, obviously, a number of different, different properties. And I just, given, given the fact that the map wasn't that clear, I just wanted to understand, are there any commercial ones that are not included for potential opportunity zones?
I'm gonna have Kyle to jump in, or Warren, because they worked on the map. But the way I see it, it looks like all of the commercial property that's along Holcomb Bridge is included in there. The problem with Holcomb Bridge is that it is kind of bisected by residential, so you have to be careful in how you jump to the next property because they have to be continuous. So Kyle, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I do. I don't believe that every single commercial property on Holcomb Bridge Road or frankly, every single commercial property in the City of Roswell is included. There are requirements that the state has on determining which properties are and are not eligible. And while the city is welcome to put forward as many properties as it so desires, the goal here is to ensure the state's approval of the boundary. And so by including properties that don't meet their definition, we did our best to try and be aspirational, but not overly aggressive so that they don't come in and then start adversely trimming down the boundaries. So not every single commercial property in Holcomb Bridge Road is included, but I can assure you that every property that meets their definitions to be included in an opportunity zone are.
Thank you for that, thank you for that clarification. And I guess my, my one other question is kind of similar to one we had last time, Kyle, when we had this discussion at the, at the committee meeting. And so I guess just what I want to make sure is, is I see kind of the two sides of it. On one side, obviously, I'm very focused on the more opportunity zone, the better. You know, I want to just have that incentive to drive business here. So, so I totally see that, I, I, I support it. And I certainly think that's the approach we're taking. I do want to just kind of play the devil's advocate for, for you as, as well as this, this council, just to, just, just to hear your thoughts, Kyle, as you look at so many of these, you know, probably across the state or country or whatnot, is, I guess my concern is if there are any parcels or areas on this map that aren't in kind of the full need of the redevelopment and the need of the, the activation, et cetera, by having it, does that create the risk that we're not, we're not targeting and focusing our many, you know, frankly, very blighted properties or really properties that do need a lot of activity? So I, I don't know what the right answer is because I do see both sides of seven strengths. I just want to kind of raise it for discussion with you, Kyle, and the, and the whole council.
Sure, and I think that's a, I think that's a reasonable question to be asked. You know, the intent of the opportunity zone, as you all most likely know, is to provide an income tax incentive for businesses that are willing to add jobs to the community. And to the extent that a property that is extremely challenged can get access to an incentive like that over one that isn't challenged, that does not, does it provide a, an advantage? A small one, yes, it does. However, I think that the way that the state has defined the criteria for it is intended to determine which ones are worthy of that advantage and which ones are not. And so we were very, very careful to not to try and choose, well, this one is a D minus and this one's only a B minus, so we're only going to include the D minus ones. We followed the letter of, of what the state has says it wanted, and anything that meets that requirement is our recommendation through this URP and through the city council to consider is, if it meets the requirement, then it should be included because every property in Roswell, if it can create jobs and create fiscal sustainability benefits all Roswell businesses, all Roswell properties, and all Roswell residents.
Additional comments, questions from council? Is there, I don't believe I've got anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this item. So I will look for motion. Do you have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Zapata, second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you. Next, next item, approve of the request to rezone 2019-5129 from RS 30, single-family suburban to civic, civic and institutional, located at 615 and 635 Henry Road for future development. This item was deferred by Mayor and Council at their March 9th, 2020 meeting.
Alright, thank you, give me one moment to share the screen. Yeah, quick background, the applicant was submitted last December in 2019. There was a neighborhood meeting held January of this year, followed by Planning Commission in February. As Councilmember Zapata stated, in March of this year, Mayor and Council deferred the applicant for 90 days so that they could submit a detailed site plan. The site plan was submitted at the end of May, and this item was heard by Planning Commission last month. Here's the location of the property. You can see the three other church properties, they're on the east, and that is to the right on your screen. Properties currently zoned RS 30, as are the adjacent properties, except for the current church with a civic. Across the street is the Saddle Brook Neighborhood, which is zoned URP. Saddle Creek, sorry. Here's a site plan for the property. You can see that there are two buildings being proposed with a courtyard in between. The total square footage of the two buildings is roughly 69,000 square feet. The two properties combined is just over four acres. The applicants are proposing a type C buffer, that's a 20-foot planted buffer with a wall. Here's a rendering that's a little cleaner than the site plan to give you a better idea of the layout. We were also asked to look for the site plan that was approved. This is from 2007, when the Assembly Hall and Rec Building, which is the most recent building on the property, was built. And to give you kind of an idea of what it will look like, we were able to line up the proposed site plan. The Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission recommended approval with two conditions. One, that the owner shall develop the property in substantial accordance with the site plan. And two, that accommodations left for all the properties must be approved and recorded prior to its middle-of-the-moment permit. These were staff's conditions, and staff recommends approval. Any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing no hands up, I would like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Henry, councilors. I'm having a little bit of difficulty with my video, but I think my audio, I hope everybody is hearing me okay.
Yes.
Very well, very well. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm glad that everybody's doing well and safe, especially after the last meeting. Think the COVID-19 had really changed a lot of things in our life, but thankfully, everybody's still safe and sound. I'm here tonight as the Planning Department presented that we had been deferred for 90 days to go and work on more detailed site plans, have tree survey, traffic study, architectural concept for the project we have. So I think we're, we actually being blessed to have all that completed and presented, and we received some comments, and we addressed them. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have. And I hope at the end, we can complete this process and get it approved.
Thank you, sir. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate the, the time tonight and, and you taking that time that we had. Last time you came forward, you know, just, just really council expressing their concern that, that there really needs to be a site plan and everything needs to be completely clear. So I appreciated that, that time that you took, thank you. What I'd like to do, so I've certainly reviewed the, the packet. I also spent about three and a half hours listening to the Planning Commission, which, which was only half, about half your item, half, there was another item. But, so, so, and really Planning Commission, such a valuable time because not, you know, more than just, more than just the vote, there's, there's such great comments and questions that are asked that, that definitely raise more awareness for me. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to address, address some, some really concerns and would love the opportunity to, to hear your thoughts on and overall, overall discuss. So first of all, as, as you, as you clearly know, this, you know, this, this area that, that you're proposing is an extremely heavily, heavily residential area. And so really, you know, protecting the, the character and the well-being of our, of our residential areas, I think is, is of utmost importance. And, and there's no question, as I said last time when you came forward, I, you know, I think, I think you do great things for our community, you're, you're, you're certain. You're certainly, you know, we definitely appreciate everything that your church does, so there's no question in that. And with that, I guess the concerns I have are probably, probably a couple. So first off is around uses. So this is really the middle, the heart of a very residential area. And within the civic zoning, there are some uses that I think could be appropriate within a heavily residential area. And there's some uses that I think are not appropriate and really would change the character and negatively impact, you know, the many residences in that area. So one thing I'll definitely want to make sure we're discussing tonight is uses. And it's just because, just purely, if you look in our zoning code, there's many different uses under civic zoning. And again, some I think appropriate, some inappropriate. So number one is on the uses. Number two is really on the character of the area, the mass and scale and really just the overall impact to really, you know, what the area is. And so with that, you know, I think something I definitely would want to discuss is around potentially, you know, buffers that might be more appropriate as well as size of the building, et cetera. Just really making sure that anything that would get approved to be potentially built is something that is fitting in and enhancing the area and not negatively impacting. So those are some of the initial things that kind of came to mind as I reviewed the plans, as I listened to planning commission in the presentation that you gave, which is a great one and I appreciate that time. But again, those are some kind of initial concerns that I want to make sure we hopefully are able to discuss in depth tonight. And I'm sure I'll have some other comments later on, but definitely open up to your comments as well as the rest of this council.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Judy?
Yes, wanted to know if during the 90 days, any meetings were had between the church and the surrounding HOAs? We've received two letters on behalf of the surrounding HOAs saying that the homeowners associations of those two surrounding communities do not approve of these uses. I just wanted to know if there had been any meetings to try to talk through any issues. The HOAs had, we recently went through this with the daycare center. And the applicant went and had a meeting within two weeks with the HOA and came back with some very constructive changes, I believe. So that was the question I had regarding if there had been any meetings during the 90 days with the HOA and not just individual citizens.
And I would like the applicant to respond to first Councilmember Flairman's questions and then Councilmember Judy's question, please.
Sure. In regard to the usage, of course, the church has been proposed two buildings. These two buildings, we've been asked to come up with a design forum, which we basically had give you the outside look of this building proposal-wise. Of course, this is not a concrete that can be changed down the road. But for the usage itself, we are in a need for additional more Sunday school classes. We need additional more open space for, I call them, youth or kids activities such as plays, hymns, teaching hymns, sort of tabadiah. One of the other buildings will be actually including a larger space for storage. That's probably will be down on the basement level. And that is for, we don't even have actually right now any place to store any equipment or any tools, ladders, whatever you want to add on to it to keep maintaining the campus. And the bigger the campus gets, the more equipment the church will need to obtain and have on hand for the maintenance and the constant repairs will be needed. So to summarize, the usage is basically going to be used more for Sunday schools and the kids' activities. Some of it would be youth activities and a foot bank and a clothes bank. And sometimes we do in the winter time, something we call a code drive for people who need some winter clothes or warm clothing. And this is something we run out of space for, especially when it comes during around the holidays. That is for the usage in general. In details, I can't give you right now exactly the square feet for every one of these uses will be, but the majority will probably be more of a Sunday school classes. Especially right now with, we learn that the more space you have, the better off everybody, even if we want to have kids. And I don't know how long this rule of the six feet is going to remain. So right now, if we have a room, we used to have kids in it, 10 or 15 or 12 kids in Sunday school. Right now, we're probably ending up with four or five of them in each class. But this is something we monitored as well, but we did, we did consider tremendously the use for Sunday schools. As for the character of the building, we tried to come up with something to enhance and complement actually the surrounding neighbor. And I really appreciate your comments about it's heavily residential. It's been like that and will be like that and is going to remain like that. And we're trying to come up with something to blend in and complement the surroundings. Of course, it might be a little bit moderned than some others, but we try to insert some of the traditional elements when it comes to the Coptic Orthodox Church or the Orthodox Church in general. As far as the size, we actually, currently, we utilize the full size we have right now, which is a little bit for more than four acres. And we use the guidelines set up by the city of Roswell for planning and zoning to utilize the space. The size of the building or both buildings on the four acres actually is less usage than the size of the activity center built to the east side because the size of the land was much less land-wise, but the square foot was almost 32,000 square feet in the building. I'm not so sure that this size of the building will be changed. I would say for sure it might be less, but it can be greater because this is the guideline we have right now for the zoning ordinance. So it might be changed to something smaller. If we can utilize the space, of course, will be great. But if we can't, then we might adjust accordingly. There's other elements too might really control the size and like the finance, which was being brought up back in March. So all it depends on how much finance we'll be able to get. So as far as the size, I don't think will be anything bigger. We'll never come back to the city of Roswell, even the traffic study has been set based on that size of the building or the buildings, both of them at the same time. So we're not going to be able to change it to bigger size, but we might modify it to something a little bit less or smaller if needed. As of Councilor Judy, question about the homeowner association meeting. Unfortunately, we had not been required to help any meetings with the homeowner association. Passed the last mayor meeting in March. We're just being deferred and we had 90 days to get some plans and site plans ready and architectural concept and so forth. So with the COVID-19 too, I think it will be pretty very hard for us to call in for the meeting with the HOAs and have a meeting with them. I'm sure some of this homeowner association, as they mentioned, they're in oppose of this zoning. But I respect their wishes, but in the meantime, I would like to get our church wishes because we're the owner of the property now. And we had done, spent a big deal of money and time and effort trying to rezoning for our church use. I don't think really I will be able to answer and satisfy every one of the homeowner associations. Some of the neighbors probably appreciate the improvement, some of them they wouldn't. Some of them will have the comments on the buffer, which I totally understand that buffer we use is one of the two types are approved by the ordinance of the city of Roswell. Of course, we went with a 20-foot for right now because it's require a design and approved buffer wall or wall buffer. So that's something will be submitted at the time we submit the actual planning or plans for land disturbance permit and the construction plans. Of course, we try to utilize the space as much as we can. So if we can limit the buffer to 20 feet will be great, but if it's going to be more economically to make it 40 feet down the road on two, three years when we do the rest of the engineering and the civic studies, it probably come up to be a 40-foot and we take that expense out of the landscape walls or the buffer wall out if the equation of the cost and the money comes available at the time. I hope I answered your questions and concerns and if you have any more, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Actually, you've raised some concerns for me. And that is you purchased residential property with the hopes of rezoning it into a civic use. And I would characterize this as somewhat of a commercial use, the way that you've got it mapped out on your site plan. This area, the character and the scale of what you're showing me on these renditions is clearly not of the area that is largely ranch-style homes on large lots. And so I think that we've got a couple of issues here. Number one, I would highly suggest that you take Councilmember Judy's recommendation and meet with the homeowners. I would also highly suggest that this council considers larger buffers and also reducing the scale of these buildings because they are clearly not in keeping with the area. And sir, I understand that you've got grand designs for this, but please also understand that the community and the neighborhoods would like to keep the neighborhoods whole and the character of them in keeping with the way they've been for the last 40 years. So while I appreciate what you're trying to do here, the, like I said, I've just got some issues with it. And like I said, I'd suggest that you meet with the neighbors. I'd also suggest that you look at buffers and reducing the scale of these buildings. But I will, of course, defer to other council members on what their pleasure is regarding this rezoning. Is there any other council members that would like to speak? Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And thank you for bringing this forward with the, all of the detailed information that we didn't have last time. I was at the property, I actually was there this morning and walked and drove around and got a very, very good feel for the area and having these pictures. And I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Henry that this is completely out of proportion for blending in to the existing homes. I recognize that the church is on the corner and the other two buildings are there as well. But as you are, you're moving further into the residential area, not towards a commercial area. And if this was on Alfreda Highway or if you were moving towards Alfreda Highway or a busy, busy road like that, it might be more appropriate. But as you're moving into the heart of the residential area, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for that area.
Additional comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for submitting the site plan that we discussed on the last meeting in March. So my question is, are you planning to combine all the properties into one property? Question number one. Number two, will you consider to have a minimum of 40-foot buffers? And also proper setbacks? And then I will echo also the discussion about the mass and scale, getting into the transition to residential, single-family homes. And then the other one is the uses that you already specify about, you know, if I understood correctly, will be Sunday school classes, youth activities. I would imagine that these youth activities will be, what, seven days a week? I don't know. This I would like to confirm. And then equipment and storage. And I don't know if I missed any other uses that you are planning to have on these buildings. So then about the traffic study, I don't know if it was done only on Sunday or any other days of the week have been done. I would like to confirm this with you. And then so if I understood correctly, that this site plan could be changed in the future and see like will be only a smaller and nothing bigger. So I would like to also, if you can comment on your comment about the site plan could change in the future, more details on that. Thank you.
We'd like to hear from the applicant, please.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I appreciate your comments and your concerns as well. First of all, as I mentioned, we use the guidelines of the city for the zoning based on what we have as a guideline to produce the site plan as was requested from us back in March. The city offered two types of buffers. One is 20-foot with a wall and the other one is 40 feet with no wall. So to utilize the space, we proposed the 20-foot if it comes to it and if down the road when we submit the construction plans. And the city planning decided that they would like to see what is the, what has pushed us to the 40 feet or the 20 feet. Of course, if we have the 20 feet, we have more little bit leverage if we're talking about engineering and design-wise for the storm water management. Again, the 20 feet all the way across the back of the property. So it's basically would be a little bit more room to store water. Otherwise, we might have to go to the underground stormwater to accommodate for loss of land. I'm sure this is something the civic can decide on and settle on it down the road in the future. As far as the size for the buildings, once again, we had used guidelines. We decided that these sizes can be used under the current zoning ordinance. The size is really not the big issue here is, from what I hear from you, is that in the last meeting, we've been deferred to produce plans and site plans and and architectural concepts and sort of a thing to make everybody knows what we're trying to accomplish here. I don't recall that there was a requirement from the church to have a homeowner association meeting with the representative. We did try prior to our first application back last year in 2019. And we had a couple, if it's not three, public hearing and we held them up in Activity Building at 655 Henry Road. And we had a few people attend that meeting, but it was not for the civic use. Their obstruction was, or their rejection was set up for the old project the church had on the old project the church had in mind on building up a senior living facility. And that did not go through and we all know about that now. So at the time, I don't recall any of the conversation I had with the homeowner station. They were against a civic use. Actually, if I recall correctly, one of them had brought up the zoning book and told me what is required and what is allowed under the civic zoning. So I'm I'm not saying they, you know, they're done anything wrong. Neither did we. We bought residential property because that's the only land available around us. There's no commercial property, unfortunately. As far as the combined plat, that is one of the requirement that when we come and submit a construction drawing and a full set of drawing, that one of the requirement that we have to give a combined plat for the whole entire property from eleven four fifty House Road all the way to six fifteen Hambury Road to show as it is, one parcel of land and one parcel under one property. And one owner, which is Saint Mary. Last time when we are in the meeting and the hearing, I had a question about the refinance and the zoning and and financing the project. But that's all been worked out and arranged and is in progress. Actually, both properties right now are under one entity is Saint Mary Catholic Orthodox Church. The only thing we're waiting for obtaining finance right now is the rezoning because we cannot use them as residential. As far as the buffer, back again to the buffer issue, which I do understand, like I said, we had two types of buffers and we used the most. I wouldn't say let, you know, good one. Actually, I have objects in order too because it's going to cost some money to do this design wall at the end of the twenty feet. Actually, the forty feet will probably be more of a natural buffer and that's probably be cheaper. Comes up to the to the use of the land and the price of the land. But we used it based on what's available for us to maximize the use. So we'll never come back to the city of Roswell and say we want something bigger. We we lift the door. This is our widest open for a size of building we can have in this four acres. We might be less, but would nothing be more? The traffic study, it has been done on Sunday, as I mentioned before, and I would like to refresh this answer. Is all the activities held at the church or by the church members or by the youth are volunteers. So they only have Saturdays and Sundays. So it wouldn't be actually more people coming into the church to do the Sunday more than the normal Sunday in a heavy traffic Sunday for the activity or for the church in general, but they just use one building from another at different time during Saturdays and Sundays. We don't have anybody on staff, even the administration. They're all volunteers. Sometimes we do it after work or sometimes do it before work and sometimes we do it at lunchtime. But it's all volunteers. So we don't have somebody to be down there Monday to Friday to do any kind of activities for the church or the church use. There are some service get held at the church in two different days during the week, which is Wednesday and Fridays. But I don't think they concern a whole lot of traffic at all. And if it is, there probably be maybe total of four cars so or ten cars. So if four or ten cars will make a traffic issue for the city of Roswell. I'm pretty sure the DOT and the Department of Transportation and the traffic engineer consider what could really be a serious impact on the traffic. On Saturdays and Sundays, if I recall correctly, the traffic study states no impact. The administration offices in one of the building is going to take a space. So we we don't have that space now. And I expressed that before and I'll still express it again. We are not an objection of the forty foot buffer. We're just saying that we have two options. We choose one of them to maximize the use of the land. But if the forty foot buffer would be the requirement, then we're definitely going to have to go with the, maybe we'll agree on the forty foot buffer if that's what the case may be. And that's will automatically reduce the size of the building or shift the size of the building away from the neighborhood and the surrounding neighbors. I truly hope that the surrounding neighbor understand that we didn't inquire these properties to get demand. We inquire these properties because it was available on the market. Same thing as was available for them. One of the questions we had is being popped before, are we going to be able to do a public school? And I I don't think that this is something we really foresee. Of course, we can stop Fulton County as the planning department answer the question. If the county required or inquired a specific property, but I don't think four acres would do a whole lot for the for Fulton County. We are not actually planning on opening up a public school in that area. That is not our intentions. If I missed anything, please somebody remind me if I missed any of the questions.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate that. And with all due respect, I would like to clarify a few things. The zoning that you have by right right now is residential. The zoning that you're asking for can be conditioned by this council. We can condition that you meet with the HOAs and defer this. We can require that you reduce the mass and scale of the buildings. We can require that you limit hours and uses. And we can also require that you have a forty foot buffer, a larger buffer, including a wall. Those are all of our options. What you did was you followed what you're the zoning you're seeking and staff was just making sure that it would that your zoning application was complete and compliant. But that does not mean that the city council is going to approve your rezoning. And it also doesn't mean that we won't approve it without conditions. And we may request that you defer it to talk to the neighbors. And I'm not sure what the council's pleasure is this evening. But it could be our direction that you look at fifty foot buffers and walls and plantings, also reducing the mass and the scale of the buildings. All of those are well within our right as a city council because you're going through a rezoning. And we can condition that rezoning to a site plan. And so that's what we're talking about here today. So the options are endless on what this council, I shouldn't say endless on what this council could do, but hopefully, we're all very reasonable people. However, our concern is fitting this in with the neighborhood. And frankly, you know, you all decided to purchase residential property with the hopes that you could have it resowned. That that was your gamble. So here we are today and I will let Councilmember Plaramo speak now.
Thank you, Mayor Henry, and definitely great points. So yeah, because I I think just something that I'd like to get across from from my perspective is something that you described was that, you know, just basically the plan you have is is really maximizing what's available within civic. And and as the mayor pointed out, this is not a civic property. At the moment, this is residential and it's in a very residential area. And that's where I'm not able to support really just something that that is so intense for the area. And you because you brought up, you know, you've been sounding, you know, very, very reasonable in the sense of you're saying, you know, maybe you make it smaller or things like that. But at the end of the day, as the mayor pointed out, it's only this council that has really the the approval and the and they afford the authority to to make sure that we're protecting the neighborhoods. Because if tonight we approve something with that maximum intensity, our planning department, really staff, they're not going to, they don't have the authority to tell you, you need a bigger buffer or it needs to be a smaller building. It's ultimately, it's what council approves. So that's that's where the concern lies. What I think might be helpful for you to be aware of is is, so I've been on council for a little over four and a half years now. And there were two situations where a residential property got rezoned to civic. And I think what you see with both of those, neither of them were maximizing the the maximum possible that could be used for civic. You know, on on a commercial corridor in in, you know, different areas, perhaps maximizing the, you know, civic property, it makes a lot of sense. But in residential areas, it gives me a lot of concern. So if you actually look in two examples are in in two thousand sixteen, I was I was in support of Jacob Slatter came forward and requested to move a bordering property, which was residential. And they wanted to change it to to civic. And that was something that that the council supported. And what you'll find is it was certainly not not in any way maximized. You'll see that it really kept with the charact- the existing character of the residential. And then and then also there was another one in twenty nineteen, I think it was twenty nineteen. And on on hardscrabble with World Harvest Church, they had they had they had come with residential to be moved to civic. And again, what you'll find is absolutely not not maximizing the the most biggest biggest building possible or anything like that. They may have if they had actually purchased property on a commercial corridor or a different area, but given the residential area that they 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 did and knowing that their zoning was appropriate for residential and in civic, it was basically something they were requesting. So what I I I think this of, you know, it's it sounds to me like there's a lot of lot of consensus and a lot of really just concerns regarding just just uses and wanting to make sure that it that it is just the uses that you've you've provided. And also regarding the 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 size and really the impact of the neighborhood. You you brought up an accurate point earlier, which was, are you required to meet with neighborhoods or anything like that? Absolutely not. There's no requirement of that. But what you've brought forward is something that that's that sounds like it gives a number of individuals on this council some some concern and some pause. So what I'd what I'd propose consideration is if if you were interested in in perhaps getting some type of of short term deferral, something along the lines of just hearing the different concerns from this from this mayor and council and and meeting with the different neighborhoods and seeing how, you know, what 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 gets you something where it makes it makes sense for you and and gives you interest to be able to meet your needs and at the same time enhances an area before it's going to negatively impact it for the character. So so that's kind of my perspective on it all. But again, I definitely appreciate the time to see where you're coming from.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I I I agree with Mike here. I think that for me, where I'm having an issue and and definitely weren't you didn't have to speak with the neighbors, but there's a bit of uncertainty in the planning because when we've looked at the building, you said, well, it could be smaller. We could go twenty, we could go forty, you know, and then I there's been some time periods being thrown around twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. You know, that's it's a long time down the road. What might the area look like then? What might the traffic look like then? What might all these different things? So so when we're looking at this down the road here with the uncertainty of what the building actually is going to be and look like, I think that I that gives me a little bit of pause. I think if it was more hardcore, here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to use it for. Here's the hours. And so we could condition the property for your use and give the neighbors and people a peace of mind that that is what it's going to be used for. Right now, I think me and the two homeowners associations, Saddle Creek and Hollyberry are the largest in the area around there who've written us in opposition to this. So there's obviously concern in the area and that's the last thing I know you as a church want to. So, you know, as Mike said, I think Councilmember Plaramo said, I think that for me, I would support a deferral to get you know, with these homeowner associations to decide what this is going to look like. Definitely what the what you're okay with buffer wise, what you're, you know, give us a product that we can say, yes, we condition it this way and we, you know, can go forward. Or no, you know, this council doesn't feel like it's right. I I just, there's just too much uncertainty tonight for me. And I also think in the citizenry surrounding the area, there's there's a lot of uncertainty of what this is going to be. So I I would I would go down that road. That would be my opinion as well.
And I I'd like to ask the applicant, are are you willing to defer?
I truly did not plan on it.
Is that a yes or no?
I don't act alone. Maybe I'm down here alone, but I'm presenting a board. So if you want to defer, that's really completely up to you and up to the board. Or if you want to refuse it, that's totally up to you too.
Well, sir, in order to defer, we need your agreement on doing that. So I just need a direction.
What's my option if I say no, Ms. Mayor?
Then the option would be we either approve or deny your project.
I would rather to go with that choice.
Pardon?
I would rather to go with that alternative because I think with the board, we had went up the extreme, extreme hardship during this COVID nineteen to spend money in everything to produce to the counselor meeting what they asked us to do back in March. If I go back and say we defer it again till we get with the homeowner station and see what they want us to build, I think the board will take that as a point of why the homeowner station want to control our building and our church service. Yes, sir.
Look, sir, it's it's not that the homeowners association is controlling your church or your church services. It's the city of Roswell controlling what you can build within the city of Roswell. And one of the things that's very important to us, not only is our faith based community important to us, but also our residences and businesses as well. And what we look to do is balance all of those issues. So unless I'll give you time to change your mind. A council member's got his hand up, but I would like to, and we've got some folks in the public that would like to speak. But I'm going to call in council now, but I I'm going to come back to you, sir, and ask you again if you would like to defer or if you would like this council to make a motion. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pluffick, just want to let you know recently, you know, we went through a daycare applicant and we recommend to go back to the neighbors and the association nearby. And staff helped to put together this meeting. And this was was very successful. The meeting was done. Then I don't know if everything was accomplished, what the neighbors wanted, but the 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 process of meeting the neighbors got done and that was a big help to move forward the process. So like I said, staff helped to put together this neighborhood meeting was a virtual meeting. So, you know, I would recommend your consideration of having a neighborhood meeting on the short term. You know, we we, I think it was two or four weeks to get done, two weeks to get done the neighborhood meeting and then came back immediately to mayor and council again. So it was not a long, long process. And the staff helped to put together that. So I would recommend that if you want to consider having this neighborhood meeting during the next two weeks and get done this part of the process, that would be very helpful, I believe, for for your application. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and help here. A lot of work goes into creating our zoning. And I said this before, I need a compelling reason to change zoning. And that compelling reason to me needs to come with some level of certainty. I'm not hearing that certainty in this plan. And that gives me cause to be concerned. It doesn't seem like it is impossible to get something approved if the size of the buildings are more in keeping with the neighborhood. We've gotten letters from neighbors that that are contiguous that said forty feet forty foot buffer would 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 be satisfactory to them. I, you know, I don't think that I, you know, I don't think that having you work with the neighborhoods. To come up with something that is satisfactory would be a bad thing to, to do today. I think that would be wise to keep control of, of what you're gonna build between you and the neighbors. Instead of surrendering it right now to, to, to council. Who, who I think you're hearing is having a very hard time with the lack of certainty as to what's going to be built.
Additional comments from council before I go to the public. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Yes, because I, I guess, I guess I'd say I, I find it a little disappointing. If you wouldn't want to, to just give that opportunity to, to really have a look at that plan and, and see what's available. Because during, during your comments earlier, you even said that, you know, you felt you could go to a 40-foot buffer. You felt that maybe you would be making it smaller. And so it's just, it's just as I think this whole council said, you know, this council needs to provide, provide some certainty. Some certainty to, to residents and to kind of know what to expect. And, and you mentioned as a positive, you know, by asking for the maximum, it means you'll never need to go back to council to ask again. At the same time, what I'd really prefer you do is ask for something that's, that's appropriate and in line. And you know what? You always have that ability if you do want to request something additional. That's a possibility in the future. You may get approved, you may get denied. But I think that's, that's worth the discussion on, on getting this far. And, and frankly, what I'd love to hear from Mr. Davidson, perhaps not, not now, but definitely before a vote. Is my preference, as I mentioned, is a deferral. I, I'd love the opportunity. You, you've heard the feedback here. I've told you myself, I, I only speak for myself, nobody else. But I personally feel it's, it's too large and negative impact in the area. And, and that, and that's important to me to make sure that it is in line with the, with the residential area. I guess, I believe there is the ability to either approve as requested, which, which I'm not comfortable doing for the reasons I've said. Or there's the ability to deny. And Mr. Davidson, it's my understanding also, a third choice would be we could approve, but approve the request. Because there is the request to go to civic, but it's my understanding we could approve, giving the limitations on uses based on what was said. As well as making a much smaller impactful property or, or, or development. That's not my preference. My preference is, is for the applicant to go for it. I just want to confirm with Mr. Davidson, is that, is that a third option? Or what would be your legal guidance from that standpoint?
So you could approve with conditions and those conditions are meant to ameliorate the effects on the surrounding properties. So if this council determines that it's a bigger buffer, then that's, that's up to this council. If they say a smaller building, that'd be up to this council. But they would be approving, you know, what your requested uses, I believe. But they could limit the other uses. And it's all to protect the surrounding properties when you rezone a property. So yes, that's appropriate.
And we can also limit the hours and days of uses. So there are a lot of options that we have to move forward. But I would strongly recommend, just personal preference, that we as a council don't get into site planning. So that's another reason why I would support a deferral. Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I, I agree with many, many of the points that have been made tonight. And, you know, I do think the church is a very valuable member of the community and a, and a good neighbor. I think it's important that you're, that the church fit in with the character and the mass and the scale of the community that's there. And also work with the neighbors who are there to kind of address some of their concerns. And I, I agree that there seems to be a lot of uncertainty about the buildings and how they'll be used. So I think if we could, you know, talk with the neighbors, come up with a site plan or, or look that works. And just come back with some more certainty about how the facilities will be used. That would be, you know, also being a good neighbor and helping it fit into the character of the area.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Davidson to help the applicant here. Should we take a vote tonight and deny this request? What happens and what kind of timeframe, what, what's, if he was willing to, if he was going to resubmit, how long does he have to wait?
If the council votes to deny, he would have to wait a year to reapply.
Additional comments from council? I'd like to hear from the public. I believe we've got Mr. Lance Ledbetter in queue. Mr. Ledbetter, if you're ready to speak.
Yeah, in the council hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Henry and council members, I appreciate the time. Yeah, I'm here representing Saddle Creek's homeowners association, also known as Shoah. We have had the pleasure of getting input from Stephen Perez, who is one of our residents and members of our association as well. He's at 620 Henry Road. My apologies, I'm, I'm supposed to introduce myself in terms of residents. I'm at 680 Roundsville Road as well within Saddle Creek. We do have 35 homes on Henry Road represented within Saddle Creek that has a total of 509 homeowners. That said, we are interested in having a conversation with the church and the appropriate leadership. We have not been approached to date. That said, Stephen Perez, who is, as I said, a member of our, our community, did meet with the church. He asked specific questions. To some extent, he was given, this is per his input to me. He was given some specific responses, but more often than not, it was more generalities in terms of the type of responses he was receiving. So again, concerned with the definitive determination of use of the property is still in question in our minds. The other things that are concerned too is there's a, the petition, as we understand, mentions possible future expansion. There was a house adjacent to the property they've already purchased that was on the market recently. Has now been taken off the market, as I understand it. But there's a potential that they could then purchase that house and continue their expansion efforts. Not to say that's the case, but that would be an opportunity for them because they did mention the opportunity for possible future expansion as well. I'll keep it brief because the Braves are winning, so that's good news. The other aspects are in terms of further clarity. The change further letter of intent as submitted is being requested to ensure their membership. This is our understanding that to ensure their membership, that they are not planning to sell the land as residential. And yet they're asking to break ground supposedly in 2025. So there's really, again, a cloudy aspect of what is the true purpose and the timing of what they're trying to accomplish. And I'll just speak to the other. You all mentioned the World Harvest Church. Theirs, as we understand it, became a total surrounding setback of 60 feet in terms of the buffer. Which included, I guess, as I understand it, 20-foot relevant to wall and 40-foot of greenery, which I assume would be trees. That would be something in comparison that we would be looking for relevant to the scope of this. I'm sure based on the size of the properties they're looking at developing, that probably would not be palpable to them. So I will, I will defer the rest of my time, other than just to say, we are, we would be happy to meet with the church and have further discussions. But at this time, we definitely do not have any interest in this being approved. Even to the point that comments previously been made that, no disrespect, we're, we're big fans of food banks as an example. We, I volunteered, a lot of our members and homeowners have volunteered at North Fulton Family Charities, our food bank. But we would not necessarily want a food bank right across the street from our subdivision as well. So not to say that's the case, but that has been one of the comments, as I've understood that the potential use could be used for. So thank you guys for your time. Appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. We've also got a Mr. Robbie Brown on the line.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Robbie Brown, I live at 160 Derby Forest Court. And we're the largest adjoining property line to the property with the rezoning request. We, our lot is a pie-shaped lot. So we're approximately about 185 feet of adjoining property line. And so obviously just some of the, the visual and, and noise and stuff would be a concern. So for me, the, really the, the biggest issue is the buffer. We've, we've got our backyard completely landscaped and a large porch and spend a good bit of time on that porch. So it just would really be helpful to have the buffer. I had previously, and Kevin Turner's been real helpful just as far as getting information. But I've previously written that of requesting the 40-foot buffer. The, the 20-foot with a wall just doesn't really help that much because the low point of the property line. Or the, the low point of the two properties is at the property line. So as you go toward Henry, the elevation changes. So that would just, the, the wall wouldn't be that effective. And I preferred the 40, but as I learned tonight, which I didn't know, the council could require more. You know, if like the 60-foot at World Harvest or the 50 or plus a wall. So obviously anything more toward that end would be preferable from, from our perspective. So anyway, I, I appreciate the spirit of the discussion tonight because it's clear you guys are taking in the. Just, just the concerns of, of the neighbors. And the, the zoning meeting attended wasn't, just wasn't quite that way. So I really do appreciate how you guys have been, been listening. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I believe those are the only two folks that are in queue to speak from the public. So I will bring this back to council, but before I open it up for comments from council. I'd like to hear some closing remarks from the applicant, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have, I'd like to clear one thing up. I did not say we are in opposition of the 40-foot buffer. I said we have two options. So the 20-foot buffer was elected with the site plan. The 40-foot buffer is always open, as I mentioned too. Maybe in my presentation earlier, that it might come to the 40-foot buffer. Cause it might be more economically visible to do it that way. If I hadn't been clear about it, please feel free to remind me. But I'm pretty sure I mentioned that we have two options. One is the 40-foot and one is the 20-foot. As far as the meeting with the homeowner station, I believe we have been in process for this rezoning for quite some times. And we had a, a public hearing as well. And we had a couple, actually one of the committee meetings or public hearing at the city hall. But the thing was in process. So might be our misunderstanding, or maybe I'll take it as, since I'm the applicant and I'm the one who's talking now, it's probably be my fault. I hadn't had anything to guide me to tell me to go back and sit down and try to meet with the homeowner's issues. Not that we don't want to, but in the meantime, we was not required at the time. The second thing is the starting and the uncertainty about what we're building. I'm, I'm very confident that we can build what we present if we get approved. But if we don't, what is gonna be adequate to in the councilor's meeting or opinions? And the homeowner opinions to be with the surrounding neighborhood. Obviously, a church building, it, it is not in the same size of a house. So we're not gonna be able to accomplish that. It'll have to be a little bit bigger. Also, the starting dates. We had based the traffic study on a five-years plan. So we said we can start from 2000, well, almost 21. From 21 to 20,025, which is the five-years plan. So could we start earlier? It's actually all in your hands. If you give us approval, we'll probably work out in maybe a year, a year and a half. By the time we get a complete detail, city drawings, go through red marks, zonings, plannings. Everything else and the planning department to get their comments and we address them and we get to it. I'm not so sure what makes the. We're not in denial of meeting with the homeowner associations. But I heard something, as it makes you guys concerned, it makes me concerned too, says need their approval. What if I'm hypothetically throwing this issue right here? And I said, what if we didn't meet their approval? And what size of building they want us to build? And actually, that has raised a lot more concerns to me as well. That this is not sort of a, an end of the road. It might be open enough for another additional. Go back and keep going back with the homeowner till we reach up something they can approve and they can agree. If, if the counselors have a size of a building, we don't mind taking that or consider that, what size it is. As far as the days of use, I mentioned that we, we work mainly or we open our activities in the weekends. So it starts from Friday night to Sunday night. As far as limiting the activities to this two days only during the week. Does that mean I can't tell anybody to go and, and store food in what we call it the food bank? Which is, by the way, it is not a food bank like people comes up with their cars. And wait up to get their food and pick it up and, and get their meals. The food banks we do is we collect donations and then box them and take them to who is needed in a list. So they don't come to the church. Same as any other drive or any other donation purposes. I, I really understand the neighbor concerns about the buffer. Which is the 40 feet is one of the city allowable buffer. And I don't have, if that's gonna be a condition, that's absolutely welcome. Because it's one of the two, either 20 or 40 feet. I understand that the counselors just about had enough with me and, or with the church in general. So I'm, I'm thankful for the opportunity. I'm thankful for everybody had given me advice tonight of how to approach this. But I had a few discussion with some of the board members as well prior to this meeting. And it's been going on for quite some times. And like I said, I don't want to be stranded them any longer. If we defer it and we defer it for four weeks and the homeowner station comes up with, are not happy, which they probably would never be. I'm not saying they should be happy with what we present out there. But in the meantime, we try to blend and we try to use guidelines. But if they're not, then we'll be back to square one. And I really want to use this opportunity to thank everyone and tell everyone that we assure you, if it's been approved. This building might become facts, but if it's not approved, we can't build it. So, and we can't really say, or when I said that we open up for reducing the size. Is because obviously when we push that 20 feet to 40 feet buffer, then that's gonna take a space of the land. We'll have to take a space of the road. We'll have to take the space for the service road, for the fire department. It keeps pushing things to a smaller size in general. But what is the size? My question here is what is the size acceptable to everyone? I don't have that answer from anyone yet. And I don't have an answer for you because I only use the formulas being provided to me. Or provided to the civic engineer who designed the site plan. So what is the size is approved by the city councilors?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your closing remarks. I'll take a couple more comments from council before I ask for a motion. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I, I guess some feedback I have is, I didn't hear, I, I might've missed it, but I didn't hear anybody say that specifically you had to get approval from all homeowners. What I, what I heard was, from your own words, is you maximized the, the, the potential building, et cetera, in that space. And it's something that, that I certainly see is not compatible with the neighborhood. And what was suggested is maybe beneficial to actually, to meet with the neighbors, see what their, see what their concerns are, or et cetera. What, what, again, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just extremely disappointed because you, you're saying that actually you could be fine with a 40-foot buffer. But you're now, you're saying, but you're saying you're not willing to actually go back and, and, and look at it. Because basically, I think if I'm hearing correctly, what you're saying is. Because basically, I think if I'm hearing correctly, what you're saying is, is either it needs to be civic, maximum possible buildings, minimum possible buffer, or else you just don't want to do it, if I'm hearing you correctly. And so before I turn over my time back to you and back to the mayor, that's the way that's all coming across to me, and it's very disappointing. What I'm, to answer your question directly, what do I feel is the right size? What do I feel is not too big? I don't know what that exact size is. What I do know for a fact is, with your own words, you've maximized it. And it's certainly, I feel, the maximum of what's available on civic that would be on Highway Nine is not what I think is appropriate here. So I would ask that you decide you want to take a deferral, gives you a chance to go back and see, okay, what could we do that works well for the church and is actually compatible with the residential area? Because I think based on your comments, you could acknowledge what you proposed is not compatible with a residential area. So coming back with something that is compatible, and I think by meeting with the neighbors, you're going to increase your probability of really finding, you know, where are the concerns, what are the different ways to make a building or an area more compatible? So those are my responses to your statement. Again, I strongly encourage you just take a deferral and request a deferral. And if you're not willing to do that, then obviously, this council has to look at either approving, denying, or approving, but in something that is going to have a lot more appropriate size and specifically limiting the uses. And that's my last thing I'll mention. What's upsetting is the majority, if not all of the uses you've said, seem appropriate. You know, I didn't hear anybody say they had a concern with Sunday school, or had a concern with some of the things you mentioned. It was more of the uncertainty of what happens if actually it ends up being everything allowed under civic. And that's something that a council could address, but again, it'd be a lot more helpful to be able to address with a deferral.
Additional comments from council? Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, you know, I would like to encourage you to have the neighborhood meeting. And just a little example that we just discussed today, you know, one of the neighbors raised a concern today about the food bank. And you clearly explained, look, this is not like a North Fulton charity operation. We operate differently. So there, you just make a point there and clarify this concern from one of the neighbors representing the neighborhood. So I think that a neighborhood meeting, there we come with a lot of questions. And then you clarify and specify how you operate, which day, how, and everything, and all the concerns that the neighbor has. And we give you the chance to probably easy those concerns and take away those concerns once you have a dialogue with the neighbors and explain exactly how you're going to operate, what kind of operation you will have, and et cetera. And then, you know, in terms of the buffer, in terms of the site plan, they might give you some feedback, and then might be somewhere in between. So I think that the neighborhood meeting will really help. So I will encourage you, but obviously, it's your decision, Ms. Toffick, how to move forward. But I think that neighborhood meeting might help a lot in your application. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyser?
Yeah, just real quick to the applicant. A lot of times when these kind of issues come up, you know, we hear, you know, the commentary comes back, no way, no how, we don't want that here. What I heard from Mr. Ledbetter and Mr. Brown was clearly not a don't, we don't want anything there. It was, come talk to us, and let's see if we can work out something that works for us all. And that's what I would encourage you to do. Thank you.
Additional comments from council before I ask for a motion? And I would like to ask the applicant, without commentary, you've said twice that you are not interested in a deferral. I will ask you a third time, would you entertain a deferral?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. How long is the defer? It depends. And I've never seen, or let's put it this way, I don't recall I said I would never held or hold a meeting with the surrounding neighbors.
Sir, are you interested in a deferral?
Just for the records.
Let's just say a four-week deferral. Are you interested in that? Would you entertain?
Well, a four-week defer will put us in November. It's not really the end of the world. We're in a slow process anyway, so it doesn't really, four weeks would not make a difference. And if the counting is going to be arranged for the meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion now, please?
Sure.
Councilmembers Zapata?
So I would like to motion to defer this item for two weeks, which I don't know exactly which day will be the next, in four weeks, the next mayor and council meeting, to have a neighborhood meeting, and staff hopefully can help you to organize this like in the past with other neighborhoods. So I think that, and you can have a virtual, but my motion today is to defer the item for, I need to say the day, right? Maybe someone can help me which. Will be for, I hear the calendar. So it will be November 9th, Monday, November, defer to Monday, November 9th, 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. We've got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. I'll go back to you, Councilmembers Zapata, for the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is approval of a conditional use CU 20200923 located at 720 Grants Bridge Road, the cottage school. Request change of conditions.
Yes, let me get there in a second. I'll be right there. Hold on. It's under this. Okay, so this is conditional use request for 720 Grants Bridge Road, requesting approval to amend a prior condition that was placed on it. So some background here indicates that there were applicants requesting to remove a condition from the cottage school conditional use approval, which was done in 2012. The condition limited the maximum number of students to 10. The cottage school is requesting an increase to 40 students. The school requested the conditional use in 2012 to use the existing structure. There was no rezoning of the property because at the time, schools were allowed in the residential zoning classifications. So it was only a conditional use. The civic zoning that's currently on it was placed on the property when the UDC was completed in 2014, to give you a little background and history on the property. Here's an aerial view of the property. Here is the zoning of the property. As you can see, it is civic. It is, to the rear is the cottage school at 700. Next to it, on either side, is property zone RS18, single-family residential. Here's a survey of the property, includes this cottage school. You have the school here. You have, and this is the house that is currently under discussion this evening. Here's some pictures of the property that is currently existing. There's a playground structure, as you can see, in the rear yard. Here's another photo of the property, of the back portion of the property. Planning Commission did recommend approval with the following conditions. That a six-foot tall fence shall bordering here, boundary of the cottage school, bordering 710 Grants Bridge Road on the southern and western property lines. The fence should be approved by the DRB and shall meet the visibility and intersection section of the UDC. And then, a six-foot tall fence shall be constructed along the driveway that borders 730 Grants Bridge Road, as same as condition number one. And all fencing must be completed within six calendar months. The play area to be used by students shall be restricted to the backyard of the property, and that all other conditions from the 2012 conditional use approval shall remain. Staff did recommend approval of the request. Our conditions are the following: the six-foot tall fence, the fence along 710 Grants Bridge Road, the fence along 730 Grants Bridge Road, fencing to be required and completed within six calendar months, and that all other conditions from the 2012 conditional use approval shall remain. As you know, the planning commission did recommend the play area to be approved or to be restricted to the backyard. Staff's conditions were these from the original planning commission meeting. Do you have any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions? Councilmembers Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question here, couple of questions. Why staff recommends six calendar months to build the fence? And then, my other question is, I understand that there was some remodeling on the house that was approved, so I would like to know how was the process to approve this remodeling of the original house there? So those are my two questions for staff.
So the reason we gave six months is because they have to go to the design review board. So they have to submit one month, and they go the following month. DRB has to approve the look of the fence, and then we wanted to give them enough time to get the fence built. It could be less, I'm not sure exactly, you know, you never know with weather, so we wanted to give them six months timeframe, because it will take them a couple months just to get through the design review board. Related to remodeling the house, that would require any type of permits, building permits for interior, or if they did any exterior work to the house, then that would require design review board approval for exterior. But any interior work would be just interior building permits through the city of processing permits.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, can you please tell us what, in 2012, what were the requirements that were put on at that time?
The zoning conditions? They were limited to 10 students, or clients, at the time they called them that. They had a limitation of four cars in the driveway, and they are meeting that requirement now. They have had some issues in the past, but they only allow four, and they've been parking only one place in the driveway. And let me pull up that, hold on a second, that we have that on the PowerPoint. But I need to find that letter. Hold on a second, will you find the file? Should be in the file. Let's see. I think we've got it in the staff chart as well. There were four conditions. Oh, we have that. Here we go. The hours of operation, hold on, let me see if that was finalized condition. So, hold on, one more page, here we go. So they approved hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday from 8 to 5 p.m. Maximum number of students shall be 10. There shall be no more than four cars parked in the driveway. And the applicant shall install a fence along the southern property line to the end of the shop indicated on the survey submitted on January 17, 2012, with a bearing distance of 401 feet that is amenable to the home over of 730 Grants Bridge Road and staff. Those were the four conditions that were placed on it in 2012.
And was the fence completed? I was at the property, I was just, was that?
Fence is completed, however, based on what the applicant, or the neighbor has indicated, since it's not exactly 400 feet. So we have requested that the fence be extended to make sure it meets all the way down the driveway.
About how many feet of the fence is done?
From what we understand, 200 to 300 feet. Around, I believe, 300 feet.
Thank you.
Ms. Stiebel, could you answer a couple of questions for me? Number one, what are the size of the buffers that are for the abutting residential property?
So, and the property, when it was done in 2012, there were no buffers required, because it was a conditional use, and schools and churches at that time were allowed in residential zoning districts, so no buffers. However, when we did the UDC back in 2014, we put a civic zoning on it because it was currently owned at that time, of course, by the school. So if there was a rezoning going through at this time, there would be a 40-foot buffer on the civic zoning, abutting the RS18 property. However, at the time when it went through, no buffers were required.
Well, also, I'd like to point out that at the time it went through, they had 10 students in this building, not 40. So to me, buffering is very important when you go from 10 to 40 students. My other question is this, how many students did they have right now in the building?
When they spoke at planning commission meeting, they mentioned they had 25.
So is there a reason why we're going from 10 to 40 and not 10 to 25?
The applicant requested 40 students. I believe they'll answer that question as to why they want 40.
Okay, and they'll also answer why they won't accommodate a buffer, correct?
They can answer that question, yes.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions for staff? We will hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Members of the council? Just to bring you up to speed, right now in the sixth inning, it's 6 to nothing Braves, in case someone should ask. I'm Don Rolater. My address is 1865 Lockley Drive, Suite 601 Alpharetta, Georgia. I'm representing the cottage school. Online with me tonight is Steve Palmer, who is the head of the school. I will be making the presentation, but if there are certain informational items he can provide, I may ask him to do so. Cottage School was founded in 1985 in Roswell, Georgia, and has been at its present location for more than 30 years. The 720 Grants Bridge Road property was added in 2012. The cottage school is a school for students from grades four through 12 with mild to moderate learning differences. The school provides an opportunity for these students to achieve academic and social success. Thanks to the cottage school experience, many of these students go on to graduate from college and become successful in their careers. If it were not for places like the cottage school, these students would not succeed. They would be lost in a traditional public school environment. The cottage school has been ranked by Masters in Special Needs Schools as one of its top 50 best private special needs schools in the United States. It is an asset to the Roswell community and has been so since 1985, when it was founded by Jackie and Joe DeJesolo. In 2012, the school had 133 students. As the local area has grown and the population has increased, so has the school census. This year, there are 255 students enrolled. The request is to permit a total of 40 students in the building for instruction at any one time. When the original application was approved, 10 students were permitted in the building. In 2012, the building was used for older students who were not part of the school mainstream learning experience. There were very few of these non-traditional students. The building now houses the youngest students at the school, who are fourth and fifth graders. The use was converted in 2016. The building is approximately 2,800 square feet of usable space. Four classrooms, a lunchroom and common area, offices and storage compose the rooms in the building. The life safety code for this building will allow it to be occupied by 101 persons. That information is in your packet. Applicant is only asking for 40 students to be in the building at any one time, together with related teachers and staff. That is 40. That is 40% of the permitted load. There are no changes to the exterior of the building, nor is there any increase requested in the number of allowed parking spaces. Four are allowed commonly, one is used on the average school day. There is no access for student delivery or pickup at this location. All students come through the main loading area off of another entrance to the property. Applicant obtained a sound level study from Arpegio LLC conducted during school hours between 8:30 AM and 2:30 PM. That study indicates that during school hours, no time in that time did the sound level exceed the maximum allowed under the Roswell Noise Ordinance, which would be 70 decibels, that the sound level rarely exceeded 60 decibels, and that study concluded that the sound levels were generally in the high 40 decibel to low 50 decibel range. It further concluded that the measured levels were consistent with the guidelines in the literature, such as those promulgated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, which has stated that an average outdoor sound level of 55 decibels is an appropriate guideline to protect the public health and welfare with a margin for safety. A copy of this study is in your packet. We filed it with the city prior to the Planning Commission meeting. Approval of this application will not cause any increase in the school population or in traffic. These students are on campus today. There are no, there are no outdoor school bells that ring. All end-of-class chimes are inside the building. I have confirmed with the staff, and as Jackie has reiterated to you, that there's no required landscape buffer abutting the neighboring properties. I would also suggest to you that if we construct a six-foot opaque fence along both of those property lines, any buffering that were created interior to those fences would not be visible to those neighbors, nor would they be of any benefit to them. The applicant accepts the conditions proposed by staff and is willing to accept the additional condition that was proposed by the Planning Commission when it approved this application or recommended approval by a vote of six to one. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to reserve further opportunity for rebuttal after public comment and invite questions from the mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rolater. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Yes, councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. So, my question is, does the Cottage School owns any other civic property in the City of Roswell?
The school owns surrounding property to this property. This is only a part of the parcel. Jackie put up the picture earlier. All of the gray area is the Cottage School campus. It's larger than this one building in lot.
So, does it own any other property in Olauma Road, anyone else, this, this school? Not that I'm aware of, no. Okay, thank you.
Additional comments, ques, yes, councilmember Judy?
Rolater, I had a conversation with one of the neighbors this, this afternoon, and, you know, he, he was very forthcoming, we had a very positive conversation. There were a couple issues that he felt very strongly about, that I wanted to see if you or Mr. Palmer had spoken to him, Mr. Mueller, regarding it. One of those issues was the transportation of students to and from the building. Right now, I believe it goes, as he explained, across ways instead of through the back of the property, which would bring students from the rear of the property, which he said was much deeper than his property. And, he said that that would be a huge help to him. I, I didn't know if you all have considered that. And, he also, you know, was concerned about the, the playground out back being one foot off his property line. Those were the major concerns, and, you know, he, he was talking about possible buffering with plantings, et cetera, to decrease the noise. I just wanted to know if you all had considered any of that, or had any conversations with the neighbors in regards to mediation of, of the, of their concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Judy. We, I have talked with Mr. Mueller on the phone, and he met with Steve Palmer last Friday on the property. And, our feeling is this, our feeling is that if we fenced not only the sideline of his property, but we fenced the rear of his property, which is very dense and very heavy and not capable of pedestrian foot traffic, it's like the day it was born, then I think we've alleviated any traffic concerns. We have a path that the students walk over to the main campus, or they, or they ride a golf cart on a rainy day, they will load some of them in there and run them over there. It is not on the property, and once the fence is built, nor could it be seen. With that understanding, we're not saying that we wouldn't relocate the path, we're not that obstinate type people, but I don't think that it's, it's realistic or of any benefit to him. With that said, we're open to that. The fencing, I would tell you, would relieve the buffer issue. I don't see any value to putting plant material on our property inside of that fence, and it having any value. When we did this sound study, what it basically says is, is that the sound from that school is no different than the background noise in the area. I was out there twice during the process of this, during school hours, on weekdays, and my feeling was, you couldn't tell if there was anybody in the building, if there were four people in the building, or if there were 60 people in the building. If we could make a positive impact that benefited the neighbors, we'd certainly be prone to agree to it, but I think with the fence, you alleviate the need for the buffering, I'm afraid it would just be wasted money spent on plant material that nobody but us would ever see. If I need to explain that further, please let me know.
Additional questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Plerma?
Thank you. Appreciate the, the presentation. Having just listened to the Planning Commission recording this weekend, I feel like deja vu, but, yeah, appreciated hearing it again. I guess just, a question I have is, help me understand why you feel perhaps some, just the, you know, the privacy trees, evergreen-type trees, you know, kind of grown as a, as a, as a buffer on the other side of the fence? I, I would think that, that always gives, you know, kind of an added, an added buffering and, and privacy from whether it be, whether it be just noises, et cetera. So, help me understand why you feel that wouldn't provide benefit?
Sure. I'd be glad to explain that. First of all, when you construct the fence, it's an, it's an impenetrable barrier, there'll be no cross-traffic between the two properties. Secondly, visibility from Mr. Mueller's property to this property would be blanked out by the existence of the very tall fence. So, third, if we then go in and plant evergreen trees, if they're two-inch diameter, they're gonna be five to six feet tall, it's gonna be 10 years before they're much of any benefit at all. While it restricts the area around our property, I don't know that it benefits Mr. Mueller in a realistic standpoint. It's one of those things, if, if you walk the property, and Michael Carterman from the city walked it with us, you get a better understanding, but it's all whimsy and earthy, I think. And then the last comment I needed to cover was on the playground, it was just placed upon the property, it can be moved, it's gonna be invisible from the fence, but if it's the pleasure of the city council that we move the playground, we're happy to move the playground.
Yes, councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I, I, I also walked the property, and I have a comment about the fence, a six-foot fence, I, I'm five foot, a six-foot fence is just a foot above where I am, and this property is on a slope. So, so basically, having the fence on the south, and, and I'm mostly talking about the south, the north-south portion of the fence, isn't going to block a lot of that noise from the upper level where the kids play, because the kids are supposed to be in the back of that house, and the back of that house is what winds up exactly with the neighbor to, to the other side, that, that lives in that property. So, I think it'd be very important to have trees in addition, a buffer in addition to the fence, just because of what you have going on with the topography of that property.
Sure, and let me give you a little further thought. It's only brief recess breaks that are taken at the back there. All of the recreational activities take place in the gymnasium, which they go across the path to the main part of the campus to participate. There's no organized recreational activity behind the building.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you please help us to understand the spirit of the zoning conditions in 2012 regarding 10 students? What was the spirit back then, if you can help us to understand?
Yes. When this building was put in, into action by the Cottage School, it was a building for students who were not in the traditional mainstream of the school. These were older students who were not attending regular classes, and they met there to get their educational training. It had a different purpose when it was purchased by the school. In 2016, the need increased for young students, fourth and fifth grade, and the program for non-traditional students virtually went away. So, that's the reason that the use of the property changed, and with that change was the need for more classroom students, because we have four classrooms in the building, and each of those classrooms can accommodate easily 10 people. And so, utilizing those four classrooms at somewhat close to what they were designed to do is a benefit to the school and not a detriment to anybody else. You stand outside the building during class, there's no noise, you don't hear anything.
Thank you, councilmembers Zapata. I would like to interject. In my early years being on council, Cottage School came before us, and I do remember having the conversations, because it is in a residential area, even though it was permitted, we had concerns about how it would impact the residential nature of the area. So, I remember the thinking at the time, is limiting the number of students not only would limit the impact on the neighbors, but also it would limit the transportation issues on Grimes Bridge Road. So, that's just a little bit of history on 10 students. The theory, I think, was 10 students are quieter than 40 students, and 10 students have less cars than 40 students. So, that was a little bit of thinking back then, because it clearly is in a residential area. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Just dovetailing on that, older students also are, are different than having 10 and 11-year-olds running around. So, I, you know, I could understand where that thought process came from of approving this back originally. And so, now, now it's changed, and we don't have the older students, but we have fourth and fifth graders, is what I understand. I wonder if there's a possibility of the school to maybe use this as an office and put the students with all the other students in, in the other buildings?
Now, we have an office building, we have a headquarters or an administration building, and all the administration is there, and it functions as it should. This space, as it's being used for these students, has no further impact for these two reasons. There's no access for dropping off students or picking students up out in front of this building. It's absolutely prohibited. One or two staff people will park in front of it. All students are picked up or dropped off back at the main, a main office. When you stand on this property during school hours, there's no noise emanating from this building. If there's no noise and no vehicular traffic, then I don't see how that's a serious impact on the health, safety, and welfare and morals of the people on either side.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll get back to you, Mr. Rolater, with rebuttal, and I'd like to hear from the public now. The first person on my list is Cindya Honeycutt? Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Sorry, I'm not seeing the video function, so I guess I'll just be speaking.
Yes, thank you.
Without the video. Hello, my name is Cindya Honeycutt. I'm the daughter of Ella Ruth Honeycutt, who lives at 730 Grimes Bridge Road, next to the Cottage School at 720. I just, I want to emphasize the agreement by the Planning and Zoning Committee at the meeting September 15th, for a six-foot solid wooden fence amenable to the Honeycutt family to be built along the western side of the Cottage School property, connecting with the existing fence, going past the parking area north and extending to Grimes Bridge Road, taking into consideration safety issues of entering and exiting 720, and connecting at the other end of the existing fence to continue south past the umbrellas and outdoor area at the rear of the building at 720. We would like to add to our original request that a vegetative evergreen buffer be planted on THC, TCS, sorry, property alongside the fence to act as a sound barrier. Also, since the existing fence is eight years old, the Honeycutt family is requesting adequate and necessary maintenance of the older section of the fence, as well as the two newer portions to be added. And we would certainly appreciate that the Cottage School keeps to the timeframe to build the fence within the six-month period of time designated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Cindya Honeycutt.
Thank you so much, and I believe we've got another Honeycutt, Jenny Honeycutt? Jenny, did Cindya speak for you, or?
She has her computer unmuted.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Let's go to Jeff Mueller, and we'll come back to Jenny.
Excuse me? Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, great, great. Thank you. Okay, I'm Jenny Honeycutt, I'm another daughter of Ella Ruth's, and I had some questions about the environmental noise survey report. From what I under, or what I've read, the survey was done over a three-day period from September 1st to the 3rd, but it did not begin until 3:30 PM on Tuesday, September 1st. So, it's more like a two-day show of the noise, rather than three days. I was also wondering, in fact, but I think it, you've answered my question, I wasn't sure about the schedule at this facility. I, for some reason, was under the impression that it was, the classes ended like around 3:00 or 3:30, but maybe I'm wrong. Well, okay, so I have a question about, actually, the validity of the, the noise survey report. And then, of course, it says three days, but yet, it was actually two days. So, I'm just wondering if that is actually a conclusive report. I'll continue with, with my notes here. Vegetation is a sound buffer, we all know that. We understand that the purpose of the aerial view that the, the school paid for, the Arpegi Report, is, was to show where the monitors were located, but we had a hard time really rela, or, or seeing, recognizing which house was what. It was necessary. It was necessary for us to consult the most recent view on Google Maps to make our way around, and it made quite a difference. We encourage you to see this image. Just to be clear, the arpeggi photograph is dark and was taken the first few days of September. And I say that because vegetation is not the same at the beginning of September, nor is it during the summer as it is fall and winter. We have asked for the six-foot-high solid wood fence and an evergreen buffer of the same height or higher. I was looking into this, and I've seen in many places, the evergreen buffer is two feet, often two feet higher than the fence. Another thing I would like to bring out, or to bring up, is that 70% of the trees in this area, such as oaks, hickories, maples, dogwoods, sycamores, are deciduous. And so from November to April, they are completely bare. And I say this because I've heard many times from the lawyer, Mr. Rolater, from people at this school, and even people representing the City Hall, that there's plenty of vegetation. In the winter, though, that is not the case. I can, I can tell you, from sitting in my mother's home during the winter, we have a clear, very, very clear view of the, what used to be a house, it still is a house, but it's turned into a school. It's just not the same. It's not the same at all. I think we all know that anyway. But this would, I think, be something that needs to be considered. Mr. Rolater states that it would not be helpful to have a buffer. We think it would. Okay, so anyway, finally, I would like to just also emphasize.
I am so sorry, Ms. Honeycutt. On these Zoom meetings, they cut you off after five minutes. I apologize for abruptly ending your conversation with us. And we've also got a Jeff Mueller wanting to speak. Mr. Mueller?
Yes, hello, I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so my name's Jeff Mueller. I live at 21 Revival Street. I own 710 Grimes Bridge Road. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for having the discussion with me to hear my thoughts on this last week. I also want to thank the five of the six councilmembers that responded to my email and reached out to me in the past day or two. And also last week. I'd just like to express, one of the things that, to start with, is Don Rolater was talking about vegetation and the lack of the need of more vegetation. The school completely cleared all the vegetation on 720 that was native, old growth, small trees and bushes. All that's gone. The only thing that's left are big, you know, 20-foot and taller trees. They actually did the same thing on my property. And I brought it to the school's attention, and what I was told by them was, too bad, so sad, we cut down your weeds, and they're growing back just fine. So, you know, to hear Rolater talk about, you know, that the vegetation that's there is adequate is totally wrong, and it's not accurate. I'm actually against any increase in the number of students at that school. When it was approved in 2012, the only thing that was approved was administrative educational office space and 10 clients. Now, I don't know what clients of a school are, but they don't sound like students to me. And I, you know, I heard their explanation regarding, you know, that there were maybe continuing education type things, but that's a completely different use than what we have there now. And what we have there now was not approved. It's been operating there for two years, and it's like having a business next to you. You know, it's not a, it's not a peaceful, quiet thing that's going on there. You know, and I'd like to talk about their noise survey. I don't understand how that could be valid at all, because, you know, we're talking about COVID-19 when there's no students there anyways. And I guarantee you, I saw one of their antennas, or whatever you call them, transponders, I don't know what they were, they put out there, and it was right by the playground, next to the side of my yard. I guarantee you, they didn't have 40 kids out there on the playground during that test. The school has also constructed all kinds of things outside the shell of that building, which was the only thing that I could find they had a permit for, was to remodel the interior of that building. The building is not 2,800 square feet. It's closer to 2,100 square feet, because I believe it's even smaller than my house. So what we have there now is an elementary school. It's not permitted under anything that's been approved so far, and it's been operating for two years. You know, this has negatively impacted the value of my property in many ways, and there's no way that, you know, that's not true. I'm completely surrounded by a noisy school, and it's only gotten noisier since I've owned it. You know, my taxes are doubled since I've owned that property, and here we have the Cottage School that's a nonprofit, and they pay zero taxes. And they've acquired this huge space in downtown Roswell, and they are a nonprofit, and they pay no taxes. So I submit that if we, if we increase it by one student, it requires a tight debuffer around both our properties, a six-foot fence, the playground's got to go, and they need to redo the entrance for the students to the back of 720 and bring them in from the other part of the school where the other classrooms are, instead of coming across, you know, right on my property line. We have to figure out a way to re-vegetate my property. I don't know what would happen if I went and cut down half the vegetation in the backyard of the school. It's just, it's just unbelievable what's been going on here. The school has been a terrible neighbor, and I think this also, all this stuff has to be platted. It needs to be planned.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mueller. Once again, Zoom, cut you off at five minutes. Again, I apologize for the abruptness. Mr. Rolater, are you ready for rebuttal?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, members of the council, I'll address these as they appear. I have told you that we accept the conditions, including all of the fencing that was discussed, including limiting students from use of the front yard. It's not a problem. If you perceive you want any vegetation interior to the fence, it probably shouldn't exceed 15 to 20 feet in width, because on the Honeycutt side of the property, our building is probably not 25, 27 feet from the property line, and the driveway, as it goes down the front, is all within that buffer. So some consideration would need be given there. As to the sound levels, we stand behind them 100%. Was put in on an afternoon and then recorded two full school days of activity during regular class time with a regular class load. I'm sorry that it's a fact that there's just no particular noise generated there. We'd never have 40 students running around in the backyard of the property. We would have to schedule an event in order to do that. So the sound study indicates what's actually occurring on that property on a daily basis. Just to give you an outline of what the understanding is of the property presently, there are never more than two cars parked out in the front lot of 720 Grimes Bridge Road. That's this property. Most of the time, there's one car. There's no bells ringing outside of the building. It's all an interior chime system, so there's no class change noise. There's no student traffic through Mr. Mueller's tenant's yard. A new gravel path was constructed on the school property behind the heavily wooded portion of the rear of his property. If you add a six-foot fence to that, then that's even better protection. The most important thing to understand about the Mueller property is that he bought this property at foreclosure in December of 2014, knowing the school was there. Matter of fact, it was all there, and this building was up and operating. He bought right in the middle of it. So I can't say that I'm too sympathetic to saying, well, I've got a school all around it. He bought it that way, and he outbid the Cottage School in order to purchase the property. He doesn't live there, he has tenants there. There's major undergrowth on the Honeycutt property line, but if you want us to plant some additional vegetation there, as long as it's reasonable in width and in size, let us work it out with staff, that's fine. I have no objections to it. There is no increase in student population. There are no students in this building who drive. They're fourth and fifth graders. They may drive a go-kart, but they're not driving cars, and they're not bringing them to school. There's no noise problem with this building. The ambient noise, if you look at the report, is background. It's everything else around it. I don't see any benefit to the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of Roswell by denying or unduly restricting this application. It has a staff recommendation of approval. It has a six-to-one recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and we accept their additional condition. The building is only occupied Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM. That's six times five, that's 30 hours out of an entire week that there's any activity on the property. I guess my final statement to you is, in visiting the property twice during the application process, once with a city staff member present, I observed this property right in the middle of school hours. I went inside of it with the headmaster, and we walked around in there. We saw the four classrooms, we saw the lunch area, we saw the administrative offices, we saw the storage. There's just nothing going on there. So if you feel comfortable with placing conditions on this property that make you feel more comfortable, we're happy to be reasonable and compliant with whatever you might propose. But far as, does the Cottage School provide benefit to this community, and has it been a good citizen since 1985? It's been a wonderful citizen. More importantly, it provides a need for people in the Roswell area and the surrounding area. It's one of the things that attracts people and businesses to this area. You guys know better than I do. Good schools, good parks, good city infrastructure is what makes people want to live in Roswell, Georgia. This is one of the things that does that. We ask you kind consideration, and we're happy to answer any other questions that you have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Judy.
Yes, I've got one question, and then I've got a statement. Mr. Rolater or Mr. Palmer, what is the class size in the buildings at that time? Is it, are there 15 people to a class? Because I believe you said there were two or four classrooms. Are there 10 people to a class? Is that how you get the 40 number?
I believe that's correct. Mr. Palmer, would you please interject if I'm not stating it correctly?
That is correct. It's under 10 in each classroom.
And what grade would this be, again?
Fourth and fifth grade.
Fourth and fifth grade, okay. Well, as you said, Mr. Rolater, and I've seen it all across and know some folks that have some children there, the Cottage School is a valued asset to our community. If we can belay the neighbors' concerns with, one, the fencing, two, the movement of the path, three, the planning of vegetation and evergreens, and four, conditioning of the building and property, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't get this done, because I think that the applicant is not saying no to anything that I've heard yet from the neighbors. And so I think that we should look into those four different aspects and try to get this done, because I think it's a win-win situation for the community.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with the additional conditions that Councilmember Judy has proposed. I do believe the school provides a valuable service to the community, and I appreciate their willingness to work with the neighbors. And I thank the neighbors for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns. And I think, again, I think that by taking some of the things you're asking for, adding the vegetation and the path, and some of the other things, that we can reach a compromise that works for everyone. So I would support that as well.
Let me clarify, Councilmember Judy, I don't think I heard you say it, but I heard Mr. Rolater say that they would be willing to move the playground. Was that also a part?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Wilson, you agree with that as well? Okay, additional comments from council? Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you. I was going to add, I'd like to see him move the playground also. There's plenty of room, I think, back there. I had a chance to look at the property also. Having had a school built also in my backyard at one time in my life, a row of lilies, in addition to a fence, pretty much made the whole thing go away. And so I would encourage that to be a condition also, whether they're lilies or something like it that grows fast. Within a couple of years, you don't really even know what's behind there. So I think that would be very helpful, both for appearance and also for noise reduction.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with those conditions. However, I am very worried about the number 40. I have, my kids had special needs, and we closed the gap. Kids with ADD, ADHD, they're different, and their learning differences are different. And I just think that 40 is a large number of kids in that category to be in that building. And I'd like to see the number around 25.
Additional comments from council? Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I have a question for the applicant, and then have some comments and perhaps a question for staff. So I just want to make sure that I'm completely clear, Mr. Rolater. So the fencing, it was, fencing would be in the entire border between the school and the different properties? Is that accurate? I just want to make sure I fully understand what you meant by fencing.
I think on the 710 property, it would go around the rear and down that side. I think that's what the staff intended. You can confirm that with Jackie. On the Honeycutt side, it will come from the street and come up about 400 feet. That's the way we understand the fences.
Okay, because, thank you, because it was kind of the way I was envisioning it, knowing that the moving of the playground you've mentioned, and I think is important, as well as the movement of the path. So I think those are absolutely important. But the way I was hearing it, it just sounded to me that fencing around the entire three sides of the one property, as well as the one side of the other, that was something for me.
I think that's two sides on the 710 property.
It's not three sides, Ms. Davidson?
No, it's two. Ask Jackie, she'll let you know.
It is two sides on 710. It's the side next to 720, and then the rear of 710. So we're not looking at the side, we're not looking at the other side. So it was two sides, okay?
So to be clear then, so there's, neither of the properties are surrounded by three sides for the school?
So, the other portion is not actually a part of this petition. So we were looking at it related to 720, putting this fence along the property line between 720 and 710, and then along the rear of 710. But 710 also borders 700, but that's not actually a part of this petition. So we're looking at it as part of the petition related to 720.
Okay. And then, and then for the vegetation, you know, I know you mentioned with a reasonable width, which makes sense, is, were you envisioning there'd be vegetation planted around, on your side of those fences for all of them, knowing they'd have to be with a reasonable width?
Yes. Let me answer before Jackie does. I foresee a double row staggered planting of evergreens interior to the fence along both property lines, the one with the Honeycuts, and then the two sides of Mr. Mueller. And I think, let's make that subject to staff approval, if you'd like, and let them confirm what they want us to plant as far as diameter and as number, so that you get what you feel like's a good buffer. But we're agreeable with that. I think, rather than give it a width, give it two staggered rows of evergreen trees, minimum five feet in height, as approved by staff, that would be a good condition.
And then, so with all of that, because again, ideally, I would love to find a compromise, and that's definitely my goal. Kind of the, the next part is a tough one, and Mr. Rollater, you might be counting votes and thinking that perhaps actually my vote might not might not be necessary. But for me, also, what's important is knowing there's some teeth behind this, because I would have the concern that we provide these conditions and have these compromises, and if they're not met, or something along those lines, I just see that as an issue. And I'm certainly open to any ideas Mr. Davidson has or Ms. Diebel has, but because in listening to planning commission, you know, it was kind of brought up the tough situation. Basically, the school, we don't need to kind of go and redo that whole discussion on kind of what caused it. But at the end of the day, the school had more people in there than was officially approved back from 2012. And at the same time, it's kind of tough to tell these children that are in school and their families, sorry, you know, October thirteenth, this is your plan, but it's too many people there, you have to get out. It's a very tough situation, so I want to make sure we're setting it up with the right way ahead of time. Something that I was perhaps thinking as a possibility is just really having it be something that's checked or verified at a certain point of year. If you didn't meet those in the prior year or something along those lines, then you're not able to have that enrollment that following year. I'm just spitballing, but it's just basically, I agree with these compromises and these conditions. I just have the concern, if we have one that wasn't followed before, is there the risk that another one of these won't be followed again in the future?
I think if you'll check with Mr. Davidson, that would be a code enforcement issue, and I would tell you that we are happy with the six-month timeline. We have approval from our board already to construct the fences. We have funding for that. And as soon as this item is decided, we're ready to start with our contractors and go forward with it. So if you include in the condition that's all going to complete within six months, and understanding you've got to go to the design review board, we're happy to comply with that.
And so, Mr. Davidson, from a code enforcement standpoint, if one of these conditions are not met, and one of the neighbors reports to the city that a condition was not met, what does that process look like? What is that outcome?
So basically, code enforcement is sent out, they investigate. If they find there is a violation, usually they're given time to come into compliance. If they don't come into compliance, they're given a citation. It goes to municipal court. The municipal court, every day that a violation exists, it could be a continuing violation, and they can be fined accordingly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would like to know if staff can show a graph on the screen highlighting what we talk about, the fence, where the evergreen will go, the relocation of the playground, the path relocation. And I don't know if I missed anything that could be shown in a map, so we can all have clearly understanding of what we are expecting here. So maybe you can highlight and share with us on the screen. I will appreciate it, so it's very clear for everybody what we'll include and we will not include what we're talking about.
Let me pull up the survey. That's all I have, because I don't know if I can highlight anything, because I don't have that with me, but let me pull up the survey. Let me go back to the survey here. Okay, so here's the survey of the property. The house in discussion is this. So, the property lines are here and here. This is the Honeycuts, this is Mr. Mueller's property. So the fencing that would go up would be along here and here, as staff condition writes. And then the other fence is existing starting here, but we would continue it all the way down to this area, as long as it met visibility within, related to intersections, to make sure site visibility is adhered to. The playground, based on the photo, looks as if it currently sits somewhere in this area. Now, this is all cottage school property here and all here. So, if they moved it somewhere back in here, I suppose it depends on where they could put it. I can't say exactly where they might move it to, but it should be at least within somewhat of the distance from, you know, within walking distance from this house, so that the kids can get to it. And then the path, I'm not actually sure, they mentioned the path. Currently, I think it goes somewhere in this area crossing over. I don't know exactly if they will think about moving it further back this way, but that would be up to them, moving the path. I don't see a reason to put it way back here, because that would just make it a little bit further. But if they put it maybe a little bit further back from here, if it's existing here now, which I can't say for sure, but that's what I'm getting, a yes, that it is, if they move it back a little bit further. And then if there's trees, the evergreens trees that you're looking to put in, if you put them in along here, and you put them in along the side here, then hopefully that's what you're looking at. I think that's the best I can show right now as to a possibility of where it would go, since I don't actually have a layout actually at the moment. And to answer one other question that was discussed related to the evergreens, I know that they indicated staff. However, conditions one and two related to the fences, we've indicated to go to the design review board. So staff would prefer that the evergreens be approved by the design review board as well. So if you're going to make that a condition, if you so choose to do so, that's how we feel that would be done. Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, okay, to make it simple then, the six-foot fence and the evergreen planting, the evergreen planting has to go all around, along the fence. So just to make it easy, wherever the fence is, has to be evergreen planting with a reasonable high and width to minimize the acoustic and the visual and acoustic. So the relocation of the player, and then the path relocation. And I don't know if I missed from this council any other condition other than maybe the twenty-five students. I got this one too. And I would like to know if council has another one that I'm missing here.
Councilmember Judy.
You're on mute.
The playground, I think we mentioned that one. I don't know how to say that. I mean, I think it's got to be more center of the property. I think the concern from Mr. Mueller was it was right on his, right on his property line. So I don't, you know, I'll take some staff or somebody else's opinion on that. And then, as far as the twenty-five students go, I don't know if I support that. You know, I think that if you're going to have twenty-five students, you've got four classes of ten. You have forty students. I think what's most important is helping students with learning disabilities here. I don't think that, keeping, I mean, if we put it at forty maximum and condition that as property, and we've done, and the applicant has, you know, been over backwards to help us here and taken all of the neighbors' concerns. I just, I don't, I wouldn't support the twenty-five number. I don't think that is, with all that's going to go into this property on behalf of the applicant, I just, I don't think I could support that.
Councilmember Hall. Oh, I'm sorry, Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I also just want to bring everyone back to the fact that the reason the cottage school is coming before us is to increase the number to forty. I believe the building is twenty-eight hundred square feet, and I would, before we reduce that number, I would love to hear more from the educators, but I have to believe that the educators who are doing the work at the cottage school have made that recommendation for good reasons. So again, I would also support the number forty, and would have to see some really strong reason to reduce it to twenty-five just arbitrarily at this point.
Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Councilman Zapata's question regarding other conditions. So I think that covered everything around the fencing, the movement of the playground, movement of the path, the vegetation along the fence, which to be approved by staff and DRB. The one thing I wanted to ensure was, it would be important for me as well if the motion had basically included all of staff's recommended motion, conditions, in addition to these ones we've just added.
Thank you. Councilmember Zapata.
Staff and planning commission, or?
Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, twenty-five students represent two and a half of what was approved in 2012, with the consent, probably some sort of consent from the near resident neighbors. So, we are doing two and a half, twenty, I know it would be four times what was approved in 2012. Everybody understood, everybody agreed probably, but, or not, I don't know. But, so it's increasing two and a half times what was approved in 2012. So, that is the reasoning, is from the residents' perspective, what was presented in 2012. And probably when someone bought the property, was told, "Look, right here will be only ten students. You can consider buying the property." And the previous people who have been there forever, then, they might, you know, they knew it was ten people. And then, eight years later, we are doing four times what was approved. So this is the reasoning behind, you know, trying to come with common ground between what was promised and committed and approved in 2012 versus what is requested today in 2020. So in a, in search of compromise, and I'm sure that, you know, both won't be happy, neither the residents, maybe neither the school, but, you know, that solution that is right in the middle will be twenty-five. So that is the reasoning behind twenty-five, is to increase two and a half times, which is quite a bit, two and a half times what was approved and requested in 2012.
Councilmember Judy.
So, as of my question earlier, they're in classes of ten. So, I would like to hear from Mr. Rollater and Mr. Palmer if thirty is a number that is doable, or if it's worth it. Otherwise, I will stick to forty. I think, you know, twenty-five, two and a half classes, they've already had twenty-five students there. And so, I mean, again, this is about helping kids with learning disabilities, and in the school especially of this age. And I don't think there's going to be much more noise with fifteen kids in class. That's just me. I, you know, I also didn't agree on the, you know, zero to four-year-olds other place. So I think that for me, this is not a situation where we need to parse this. The applicant has gone and done and is going to put a lot of money into making these changes to make this happen. I don't think fifteen kids or ten is going to make that big of a difference. It's all about helping the kids here.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So a question for the applicant. How many students are right this minute in this house?
I'm going to answer, and then I'm going to ask Steve to confirm it. Mr. Zapata, my understanding is that we have about twenty-five students presently. Steve, would you confirm or modify that for me?
That is correct. We have twenty-five at this time.
Okay, so seems like currently it's working with twenty-five students. So, again, I see two and a half times increasing is reasonable for what was approved in 2012, that, you know, we have to understand there was a reason in 2012 what ten was approved, and not forty or fifty or one hundred. So, you know, I like to be close as well and respect what was approved and and agree in 2012. So I think that if today is twenty-five, operated with twenty-five, then I would like to, if I have support, to have it in a motion with twenty-five students.
Councilmember Tyser has his hand up.
Thank you. I'd like to know if Councilmember Zapata would consider making it an even, even group of three ten-person classes, which is what we've been told, excuse me, by the educators, is what they do. You know, three classes of ten seems to make more sense to me.
Any additional comments, questions? Mr. Rollater, I think there were a couple of questions that were leveled at you. Did you feel like you had the chance to respond to all of them?
I think it would be better for all of us if we do respond. It'll be part me and part Steve. We are at twenty-five today. People keep coming to our school asking for help for their children. It's kind of hard to meet that need when we're at capacity right now. We have classroom space, four classrooms for ten children, would be the forty students. That's our push point, is that Roswell keeps growing and people keep coming, and we're trying to fill the need. We're a nonprofit. But from there, Steve, if you will chime in and answer as you chose to, I saw you asked me that.
Again, thank you, Mayor, for your time, and also council members. I'm Dr. Steve Palmer. I've been working with students as an educator for almost thirty years. Backgrounds in special education, family members, daughter, grew up a learning difference. Most people say SLD as a specific learning difference or disability. I say it means more kids learn differently. The Roswell Cottage School offers so much to a lot of children. But directly answering your question is, there's a lot, a lot of demand, and it continues to continue going higher, especially with what's going on nowadays. All the research shows small class sizes. The program began in eighty-five. The program began in 85. Jackie and Joe, uh, with their vision, uh, knew and did all their research, uh, connected to other private schools in the area, that under 10 stays great, uh, and works effectively. So that's the reason why we're not pushing to have 40. We do not look to exceed that, but with the demand. And again, our goal is to help every child succeed. So that's why we're asking for that. The capacity, of course, is 101, uh, but again, doing this for almost 30 years, our class size compared to 30 to 40 of public school, uh, staying under 10, uh, seems to do its best at, at its best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, any additional comments from council? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion. Councilmember Zapata.
I'm ready for a motion if, whenever you are ready.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will motion to approve with the following conditions. All conditions from staff and all conditions from planning commission, plus mayor and council condition of the six-foot fence, uh, all around the property who are impacted, plus evergreen planting along the fences with a reasonable high and width to accomplish visual and acoustic solution. Relocation of playground. Relocation of the path. And, you know, three times what was approved, the number of students bringing to 30 instead of 10, to 30 students on the building. I think I covered all the conditions we have discussed with this mayor and council.
Councilmember Zapata, uh, did you want to reiterate that the evergreen plantings as well as the fence go to the design review board for approval?
Yes, but also we'd like to do, you know, less than six months because if a six-foot fence takes six months to get it up and running, um, I think it's excessive. So I don't know if it's a way to expedite the six month or that is the real minimum expectation to get the fence up.
So would you like to say in your motion that you would like it to go to DRB as soon as humanly possible?
Correct. Yes, Mayor. I would like to add this.
That, that works. Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by councilmember Hall. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it's Zapata, Hall, Tyser, Willsey, and Judy. It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. We're going to take a 15-minute break and we'll be back for the rest of the agenda. Is everyone still in the building? I see councilmember Judy and Hall. Oh, here we go, councilmember Plermo, Tyser, and Zapata. Just ran over this. Councilmember Willsey. Okay, we're back and I will, um, give this back over to councilmember Zapata for your next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Item, next item, approval of the initiation of the text amendment to the Unified Development Code to Section- Code to Section 2.2.20 Residential Parking Location.
So yes, I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, darn it. Sorry, let me get back here. Okay, so this is the initiation of a text amendment for 2.2.20 Residential Parking Location. At committee, we discussed this. We were asked about properties that have no driveway. So we added some additional language in red at the bottom that indicates that states where existing developed parcels that do not currently have a driveway that conforms to the above description, parking would be allowed on the non-compliant surface until such time a development permit is issued for the property. At that time, the property would be required to come into compliance with all applicable code requirements. So basically that means those properties that have no driveways and might be using grass, that they've been like that forever, if they were ever developed in the future, then at that point in time, we would want to see a driveway so that they would come into, or requirements with the code at that time. So this is initiation of a text amendment. Staff recommends approval of the initiation.
Does council have any questions? Yes, councilmember Claire Moen.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Ms. Devlin, I have two questions. So one of them, can you remind me, the only updates that you're recommending for the text amendment is what's in red. So basically outside of what you showed on that slide and what's in red, nothing, there's no other proposed changes. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, great. And that was my first question. My second question is, you know, I was wanting to think of just the worst, worst-case scenario or, or something along those lines. What, what would the situation be if, if one of those homes that does not have a driveway and therefore is parking in the grass, they end up at building an addition, enlarging their house, something along those lines, but do not pull the permits that they're required to pull? Then, then how is this impacted? Or what would, or what would the process be then?
So if they are required to pull a permit for an addition, but I think if we, if they were developed, like redevelopment, we were talking about, not if they did an addition to their house, but if somebody tore the house down and rebuilt a new house, then they'd be required. So that's what we're thinking.
If I might add, it would just follow all the other requirements already in the code for any changes that trigger improvements to the frontage. Those streetscape frontage improvements would also trigger the driveway to be built to code. So there are places in the code that trigger when property improvements are made, then the driveway would have to be brought into compliance. If it were just an interior project where no exterior work is being done, you know, they're remodeling the kitchen or doing something else like that, then that would not trigger those outside improvements. But I don't believe the code would require that driveway to be upgraded at that time. There are other building code requirements that when you exceed a certain percentage of value on the house, that there are code upgrades that are required to be met. I don't believe that anything external to the house would be triggered. That's just something that we'd have to check to make sure we're in compliance with that.
Okay, and, and I guess, I guess getting back to it, so I guess in, in, in reality, I got to imagine nobody's really tearing down a house and building a whole new one without a permit. But just, just on those, those lines, or as you mentioned, there are certain additions that could potentially require these, these updates. How does the city handle it if, if it's done without a permit?
If we are made aware of work that's completed without the appropriate permits, that is handled through our code enforcement process for, they're required to do an after-the-fact permit, for example, depending on the circumstances, if they don't come into compliance, the process that was described by Mr. Davidson earlier about writing a ticket and taking it to court is the process that that would go through.
And then so, okay, and then if, and then so if it's, if it's remedied, then potentially there's a, there's an after-the-fact permit? And if that's the case, are they then required to do their, their updates?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They would be required to compile all applicable codes at that time.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Yes, councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Jackie. This settles a, a number of my concerns. I still have a couple of others, but this is just initiation, so I'm okay with it.
Additional comments? We have no one in the public that would like to speak, so councilmember Zapata, do I have a motion?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Yes, motion to approve the initiation.
Motion to approve by councilmember Zapata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, mayor. Next item, approval of the initiation of the text amendment to the Unified Development Code to Section 9.4.2 Parks and Open Space, letter C, Community Recreation.
So this is also initiation for 9.4.2 Parks and Open Space, letter C, New Recreation. As requested at committee, we were asked to break these two apart, which was what we have done. As you can see, under the defined section, under number one, we have labeled the current one existing as letter A, and the new paragraph is letter B to state a public recreation facility for which the use is available to the general public, including indoor facilities such as community rooms, event space, and outdoor facilities such as swimming pools, tentacles, and playgrounds. These facilities are proposed, planned, provided, and operated by a local governmental authority or designated. Staff recommends approval of the initiation. Do you have any questions for staff?
Does council have any questions? Yes, councilmember Claire Moen.
Thank you. Basically, I remember kind of discussing this in committee. Can you remind me, so, so I see that the only change being made is adding a B. And if I remember correctly, you're saying just purely because it only gave the private definition, there was no definition of the public. Can you just help me understand, you know, kind of the, the intent or, or the benefit of adding this?
For, yes, we are only adding letter B, what is in red. Currently, it is just private. So technically, the intent is to, for all of our public facilities, if they ever, you know, really want to add additions on, currently they do it, but this actually makes it clear and in the code to indicate private and public recreational facilities to meet these requirements. So that is just to make it clear and concise and to bring it in to state the same thing as the private does.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council? No one in the public is looking to speak, so councilmember Zapata, give a motion.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Motion to approve the initiation for the text amendment.
Motion to approve by councilmember Zapata. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, mayor. I just have a recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation and real estate.
We have a motion for closure. Councilmember Tyser.
Motion to go to closure.
Councilmember Willsey, seconded.
Yes.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. We are adjourned.